Go call. Congressman, Mr. Rutter, we excuse their first student, Councilman Langford, he's out of town. That is your second. Uh, favor. I oppose. Okay, agenda is before you. Our family approve the agenda as with some consideration and you have some additional.
Yes, we can remove under item seven, the special presentations, the smart ear deployment, as well as the open cover of meetings at training and add a special presentation by Dr. Bob Lutz in his place and also under item twelve, add a resolution to declare this an emergency for the variant coronavirus.
So, the change is second. On favor.
Aye.
Oppose? Okay. Citizen comments. Another chance. Okay, move forward.
Oh, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I do have a couple of citizen comments.
Okay.
For our district. Um, the first is from Tom Salberg in River District, neighbor staff and elected officials. First, my heartfelt thanks to the, for the open lines of communication and rather factual responses to the issues involving a current COVID-19 global pandemic. As one of those deemed to be most at risk in having just canceled nature through San Francisco, which is now ordered to shelter in place, I am encouraged by our mayor's involvement in and partnership with all of our neighboring communities to help stem the tide of this disease. Our city page is proactive, informative, and timely, and I appreciate all of you for communication and strong leadership during this unprecedented time. Next, while the next winter glow seems to be a long time away, I ask you to approve the funding for this event as soon as practical to ensure an even better experience for Liberty Lake citizens and the multitude of visitors from around the area. Having a successful winter glow with many thousands of people frequenting our restaurants, thus without that stores and gas stations will certainly help mitigate the loss of business and income many are now enduring. This in turn will also generate additional sales tax revenue that will be needed for our next budget. I know you all get it. Again, and always thank you for all you do. The next citizen comment is from Mark Sada, who lives on Auburn Road in his Liberty Lake resident. He says, tonight I would like to discuss general business B1, authorizing came a invoice for the winter glow spectacular in the amount of 10 pounds involved. I would like to review some of the successes of last year's winter glow spectacular. First of all, winter glow had a late start. Approval of last year's funds by the city council has not completed until October. Once the funds were approved, a committee of Liberty Lake citizens and winter glow personnel was developed and a plan was completely created for setup, daily maintenance, and teardown. There were over 50 volunteers for the initial setup, which was scheduled to take seven days and was completed in four days. The opening night was attended by an estimate of over 2,500 people. Every night up to and through Christmas, the event was heavily attended by citizens from Liberty Lake, Spokane, Cortland, as well as other areas of the inland northwest. After the event was over, teardown was scheduled for four days. Again, the number of volunteers was well over 50, and it only took a day and a half to complete. I was selected to the board directors for winter glow in charge of fundraising. We currently have a number of fundraising events in place, but have not proceeded to publicly announce them until the invoice has been approved. I am asking each city council person to consider approving general business B1 tonight so that we can proceed to make the 2020 winter glow spectacular a bigger advance than it was last year. Thank you in advance for all of your support, Mark Sada.
Done. Thanks. Okay. Okay, uh, I want to introduce Dr. Bob Lutz. He is with the Health District. Dr. Lutz, uh, I first really want to thank you for taking the time to speak with us. Dr. Lutz has been, uh, an absolute blessing to our community on a regional level to make sure that we're doing everything possible to keep this from spreading. His knowledge based on this topic is phenomenal. I know he's probably one of the busiest individuals right now in our entire region and not getting a whole lot of sleep at this point with how busy he is. So I can't tell you how grateful I am that you were able to take some time to talk to us. So I'll pass over to you, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council members. As the mayor said, my name is Dr. Bob Lutz. I think maybe after today, I may be known as Dr. Doom and Gloom. Because I think what I want to share with you was a very sobering message. I would first like to echo the sentiments of one of your constituents from that first letter. Again, I commend you, uh, as a city council, I commend you, Mayor, for your support of this community-wide effort, because that's what it's going to take. Any of you who've been following this over the last few weeks realize that this is escalating in a significant fashion. When I presented the city councils Spokane last week, I was not quite as doom and gloom as I become over the weekend and I continue to find myself feeling with how this evolves in a very, very rapid fashion. It is concerning for me in that there's one piece of data that I just heard that we are being compared to Italy in our response. Italy has the highest mortality rate, uh, over 4%. I contrast that with South Korea, which is less than 1%. And unfortunately, I would say that our response overall has been sluggish for any number of reasons. Not so much the fact that we haven't taken this quite seriously. You said that, I could have said that we've been there before. I would argue that unless you're in the back. The Spanish flu of 1918, I think, very few of us remember that far in certain population books. That was the last true pandemic that we are seeing. It was mad, and just to put things in perspective, the mortality rate of the animal flu is about 0.1%. The mortality rate of the pandemic H1N1, the swine flu, was 0.02%. The mortality rate of the Spanish flu of 1918 was 2.5%. The estimated mortality rate of COVID-19 is between 2 and 3%, with Italy right now being 4+%. So this is not something to take lightly. And if that's a message that I can share with you, that you can share with the constituents, and that I will continue to share over the coming weeks and months, this is not something to take lightly. This is not something that's going to go away in a matter of weeks, maybe months, but this is going to significantly change the way we live now and the way we will recover in the future. We are resilient, but that said, it's going to take a combined effort, collective effort to really make this work. So a couple of graphs. This is, and again, I, as I said, behind me, as of this morning, 95,000 individuals worldwide, 7,000 deaths. As you know, this began in China back in early December and has spread to more than 150 nations across the world at this point. This is the US map, and this number is increasing exponentially. Yesterday, the number was 3,500, 3,800. Yesterday, I compared New York and Washington state, and they were comparable. Today, New York has 1700 cases. It suggests probably a function of more testing. Because this is out there. I've been saying that, we've been saying, I collectively have public health reviews for months. The reality is that in, in Seattle, it came to determine that it probably had been spreading in the community for weeks before the second, third, fourth, fifth, 25th, 50th cases were dead. I have four cases right now. I have more. I don't have the document, and I know they exist. These are curves that were shared with us over the weekend, and this is what sort of increased the alarm of health officers. There was a call on Sunday that was led by Secretary Leesman, Secretary of Health, and Dr. Kathy Lo, who was our state health officer. And this curve represents the number of what are called COVID-like illnesses. And this first graph is of ED business. So these are individuals who are just presenting for evaluation of symptoms. They may be or they may not be experiencing a COVID-like illness, but again, I think it's pretty obvious, this is a significant uptick over the last two weeks. Maybe a greater concern is this second graph. Again, reflected in that significant uptick, maybe a steeper curve. These are actual hospitalizations. We know nationally and internationally that about 80% of individuals have relatively mild or ACE or ACE immunology, very mild infections. 20%, however, end up being hospitalized, and about 20%, about 5% end up in the ICU requiring ventilator support, oftentimes intubation. And mortality rate for those individuals over the age of 60, at an international level, and especially coming down to China, is about 11 to 12% overall. For those individuals over the age of 80, we're talking about 30+%. Not something to cough or sneeze at. We've probably all seen this curve in various ways, shapes and forms over the last week. This is a pandemic curve. This is based upon work looking at the H1N1 back in 2009. And the dark purple curve, solid colored curve, is essentially a pandemic curve with nothing done, no interventions done. We've heard the term flattening curve. That's what we're trying to do. We're trying to both decrease the intensity, decrease the severity, decrease the duration of this pandemic. I hope, I think we should all collectively hope that we are someplace near that arrow on the left side. After seeing those curves that I showed earlier, I don't necessarily know that I feel so encouraged that we're that low on the curve. These are what are called NPIs, non-pharmaceutical interventions. I express those because there is no pharmaceutical intervention for this pandemic. There's no medication, there's no vaccine. We may see vaccines. I read today that there's some experimental vaccines taking place over by Pfizer on the West Side, because there are experiments that aren't going to be available for general use purpose for months, maybe not until next year. So these are non-pharmaceutical, non-pharmaceutical interventions. We've been practicing these for weeks, social distancing, washing your hands, cough etiquette, really basic measures, no different than what we do and recommend any cold and flu season. We get into the second column, and that's where we are, but we've rapidly progressed through that second column. One of the things that needs to be factored into are these multiple considerations. We don't do this lightly. We don't do this in a vacuum. We try to factor in all of those considerations which need to be thought of when we, when we ask our community members to take upon themselves some of these interventions. So those are some of the impacts that we acknowledge. We'd all be very naive to say this does not have significant economic impact. This has both public health impact as well as economic impact. Economic impact in the immediate, economic impact in the near future, economic impact in the long-term future. But we are resilient in the community, and we're a resilient people. But we probably have to come together and demonstrate that resilience to come through this collectively. And then those are the factors and considerations that we use in actually implementing these interventions. I keep all getting asked, Dr. Lutz, Dr. Doom and Gloom, when do you plan on, when do you see us moving through these NPIs into the next level? This is what I shared last week, based upon conversations with colleagues on the West Side. They were the throats of this. They got, they got hit very fast, very hard. And I said, I asked them two questions. What did you use to increase the mitigating efforts that are put into the community? And they talked about prevalence, which is the number of existing cases, both new and existing, the incidence, the brand-new cases, a concern for your cluster for outbreaks. As we know, it's moving through exponentially when we had a long-term system in the facility. We got that outbreak over there. And again, it continues to have that as a priority. And then we also look at the impact on the healthcare system. That's why we ultimately really emphasize these mitigating efforts, because we need a healthcare system that has capacity, that's nimble, and can continue to provide all the things that it does, and yet it's stretched, if it's stressed, if it's stressed increasingly all at once. Imagine this is like a flood. Imagine that all of a sudden, you can tend to the rain that follows in a span of two hours. The system is overwhelmed. Yet conversely, that tendency of rain falls over the course of hours, maybe a day, to the system has the flexibility and the capacity to absorb that. We don't want that flood. We want to be able to gradually stress the system. That's not what they saw on the West Side. I hope that we can prevent that flood from happening over here. I mentioned NPI 639, isolation and quarantine. Again, we do not take these efforts lightly. We always ask and encourage the most, most, least restrictive. And so we ask for voluntary isolation, voluntary quarantine. Difference, isolation, you have been diagnosed with an infection, stay at home. Stay at home until we determine the time, place, when we no longer receive an infection. So we go quarantine, if you've been exposed to someone, if you've potentially been exposed to somebody, quarantine until you demonstrate symptoms, if you demonstrate symptoms. The RCWs and the VAX, however, give health officers during public health issues and emergencies such as this, that was equipped by Heather incident back in February 29, very strong authority to implement those mitigating efforts and then some. And so again, involuntary isolation, quarantine. As well as these, and effective last Friday, when I issued a health officer order, they called for closures of events of more than 230 people, and then potentially school closures, within about two hours of having implemented that, a call from the governor of the city's confirmation, which is insane. So again, we know that we're there with 10, 11, and we'll talk about where we are today or as of yesterday, as of midnight last night. Then again, 12 and 13 travel restrictions. I would just ask, in Spokane Valley, do I see travel restrictions becoming possible? Yes. If you would have asked me last week, I would have said, I hope not, but I don't know. But I see this as more and more likely, and I certainly see the establishment of accordance. We've seen it take place already in New York. We've been polled in San Francisco, San Diego, we've seen it polled shelter in place. And we'll, I'm going to be seeing more of this, unfortunately. Spokane might be different, but it might be very similar to all the communities across the country. So as I mentioned last evening, governor's confirmation that went into effect last night, it affected retail, it affected all, all, uh, restaurants, any restaurant or bar that provided in-house services. It essentially said, unless you can provide takeout, you're closed until March 31st. All the retailers are likewise impacted. Hair shop, hair salons, barber shops, um, gyms, fitness centers, all those are impacted by this. Not inconsequential, but nonetheless deemed necessary. And the gathering, number of gatherings, to gather mass events has been dropped to 50. You made your effort that the CDC has recommended that number drop to 10. So we'll have to cancel this meeting. But that's what, again, the CDC is recommending based upon evidence elsewhere. Doom and Gloom, I think for me, I mean, what I began to share with you, uh, my message was somewhat different last week. I still encourage people that I, I want them to, um, self, you know, distance, social distancing, but not social isolation. I think that's essential, especially during this very stressful time. I continue to encourage people to say, you know, again, my look at how this is transmitted. It's transmitted by being close to you, by coughing or by sneezing. Unfortunately, we know that it's also family asymptomatic. I also know that by being this close and then having somebody else speak to it. So I carry my little hand wipes now. And I encourage again, I said, it's straightforward to touch, it's straightforward to clean. And then I say breathe, because collectively, we all need to breathe, but just not on each other. So again, this is going to be a stressful time for all of us. Many, many impacts. Again, we've not been here before. And only collectively can we really get through this. So that's why I always close my presentations with this definition of public health, because it's truly a collective effort. It's not what I as an health officer, it's not what we as a health department do, but it's what we collectively do to assure conditions that all of our community members need help, especially the most vulnerable. Because those are the ones who have been most significantly impacted. Those who have the very few resources. Those who can be the ones who, again, couldn't really feel the progress of the situation. So how do we collectively come together to provide and support anything to get this together? Thank you for your time. Any questions?
Dr. Lutz, one of the questions we've heard throughout the community is people that are starting to show symptoms of concern, uh, they go to their provider, and they're turned away, and so that they don't need testing, the testing's not available. What would your response or educational piece be for our community that may have those concerns?
I express two, I express our community at two different levels. First of all, with respect to testing. As of this morning, I have 12,486 tests that have been performed. I have less than 500 in the Spokane County region. So we're the second largest metropolitan area in the state, and I have less than 500. So there's a real shortage, there's a real unfortunate lack of available resources for testing. We've heard this at a national level, it exists at a state level, and certainly, certainly exists at a local level. At the meeting yesterday that the mayor was at, I talked with Representative Morris Rogers, she asked me, what can I do? I said, please, please provide us more testing. In this newer test case, people think, when you say tested, it's something that they can, it's like going to the, going to the doctor and getting a throat swab or strep throat and getting great results back in a couple of minutes. It's the throat swab, all those placed in the nose, and then it goes off to a laboratory, and it takes anywhere between two, three, five, seven days for those results to come back. From the interim, I'm asking those individuals providers, they're asking those individuals to shelter in place, isolate, keep themselves away from others, protect others. This is contagious, this is infectious. It's estimated that for one person who has an infection, she or he will infect anyone who tuned to government officials. And again, I mentioned to you that sometimes asymptomatic spread, we talk about it being respiratory problems, it's the coughing, it's the sneezing, has also been identified asymptomatic. And I think for me, one of the most concerning pieces, uh, again, it's anecdotal, but there was an economist who compared results of those individuals who were tested in South Korea, which has been a bit of an exemplar, in that they did very, very extensive testing across the entire communities. 245,000 tests done in very short fashion. And of that 245,000 tests, only 8,000 were positive. But concerning was the population where it was most positive. We focus on the seniors, we focus at the, on those populous populations. The population where they saw the highest rate was in millennials, 20 to 29-year age groups. Who unfortunately are not taking this seriously enough. It's business as usual. It's going out to the bars, it's socializing. I don't get sick. If I get sick, I've got a sniffle. Well, they may have a sniffle, and they may not get that sick, but they get around their grandparents, and their grandparents will get sick. And so having seen those data, granted, they have a good peer review, but they came from an economist to look at the data of those two countries. And again, I mentioned to you Italy, which is seeing the highest mortality rate, that again, is not taking this rate, this infection seriously enough. I was really disturbed to hear that we are being compared Italy, which does not bode well for us. So my message of Doom and Gloom is really also emphasizing to young people, don't be stupid. Don't be stupid. Realize that you need to really change the way you go about living and the way you go about life. Hunger down. Take it seriously. Because otherwise, we're all going to be dead and poor. That again, that sort of hunger down mentality is an unfortunate message which I'm sharing with everybody. Because again, I think that we collectively have to do just that. Otherwise, I'm going to see us, I'm at the speed part of that curve, and it's going to keep on going up until I start to see enough people in the community that I'm not getting an infection rate. So long story short, which is sort of what I do, answer me, ask me a short question, I'll give you a very long answer. I think that I need to see more testing, but I'm also limited by the availability of tests.
Are there any concerns from your perspective, uh, which has also been discussed, our community level, murders, cats, cats, dogs? My wife told me a couple of days ago, it was discounted by the World Health Organization that pets, dogs, cats, what have you, goats are vectors. And I think there's a song, "Let the Dog Out." And so I think there was a little bit of a YouTube video or something, but you know, that to the World Health Organization, who let the dog out, uh, jail, so to speak, dogs and animals are not considered vectors in this case. Certainly, we know that this virus started off more than likely in horse and bats, but your, your domesticated animals that are not vectors, so please enjoy, spend time with your pets, because you may not have time to spend with others right now. Other questions for Dr. Lutz?
I have a quick question. And we're obviously trying our best to support local businesses, take out things. I've heard some construction citizens as well about, well, that's all point and dandy, but how do we know that the people who are preparing that food are taking precautions? Any words of wisdom for us on how we can support businesses, but still try to be careful?
Yes, ma'am. We, one of our responsibilities in the health department is food safety. And so the last couple of weeks, we have had a very significant outbreak shutters to restaurants, businesses throughout the community on practices, both for sanitation and again, how individual employees, employers should be doing about their business on the other basis. So same way that I would be very confident in telling you that our food system is sick, I would encourage you to believe, encourage your citizens to believe, that again, the same recommendations, help you modify to affect this infection or replace. Our food inspectors continue to do the work, continue to educate so that restaurants that have those takeout can continue to provide the services to institutions.
I have a question with the inspectors going to the restaurants. I, I know in the past, we only have so many inspectors, we have a lot of restaurants and stuff, so they have to get a lot or a lot, get necessary time. Are we in a position where we can have some additional inspectors out there to inspect the ones that are still providing carry-ons up to Christmas content? Is it, you know, we want to support those businesses, but I think it's a really legitimate concerning question, is that are they prepared properly? Are they themselves being cautious? Because if not, it's just that, that cardboard box that comes to us is infected.
Well taken, well taken, sir. Again, I think that's the message that we'll certainly share with our food inspectors and our director. I believe that, again, they're doing a very good job, but again, certainly during this time, we're in enhanced efforts to ensure safety of food and the providers and the, you know, the producers of those food. I certainly will take that to them back to pass that on. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Any other questions for Dr. Lutz?
I'm curious regarding the increase of capacity, when you talk about ICU, um, is there any ongoing conversation with providers in the region about increasing, can I say, you know, capitalizing on circumstances? capitalizing surface and dramatically increasing the amount of bed space and ICU classes?
Yes, sir, as a matter of fact, there's a meeting about that tomorrow. So again, I think we have the benefit of watching the unfortunate situations that have fallen on those on the west side. Lessons learned. So we obviously have two healthcare systems here, two, actually three healthcare systems here. Casa Permanente, as well as, as well as Multicare and Drawless, all who have resources and clinics and hospitals on the west side, we're learning from their lessons.
Any other questions for Doctor Lass?
I guess it boils down to, um, emergency, emergency declaration, that's part of our action in the city. Can you suggest other actions that we can as municipal government take to try and promote public health in our community?
I guess I would encourage you to allow us at the health department to sort of take the lead in this effort. And as we learn more, we will certainly encourage you to do likewise, to again, promote the safety of institutions. To say that, as I mentioned, and as I said a number of times, that we've been here before, we haven't been. And even when we had lessons learned, information on that one, this is significantly a greater impact than that. And so again, I think that we have certainly history to fall back on, but still a lot of learning to have. And so I would encourage you, as I know will be the case, to partner with us and allow us to sort of be just a little bit in front. And again, because we'll be looking at the science, we'll be looking at the data, we'll be looking at lessons learned from a public health standpoint. And then in partnership, how we can again, continue to keep our community safe. Thanks.
I recognize that you're more on the medical side versus the economic side, but you're so centered to this, are you seeing a lot of businesses where all employees stay home versus, I guess one of my big concerns is that the employee is forced to go to work. Forced to be around a lot of people, which is not a learned path right now, because they need a paycheck. And so can you speak a little bit to that?
Yes, sir, we actually have, we received a number of calls on a daily basis, where we are currently employees sort of feeling the pressure to come to work because for a number of reasons, maybe your resources, your telecommuting, that kind of work aren't possible. So again, I think that we are certainly working with employers. Tomorrow, GSI has a meeting. And in the meeting, I'm going to have a couple of minutes to talk about the state of affairs from a public health standpoint. But again, we have to look at, in public health, we oftentimes talk about making the healthy choice the easy choice. Nying employers to make the healthy choice, the easy choice, by providing employees the opportunities to do the things that they need to do to still stay employed, albeit to do so in a healthy fashion.
Any other questions for Doctor Lass? I think it's also going to be appropriate to open up to anyone in the audience that has a question for Doctor Lass.
I'm with the library here in town, and my question is, we, I've seen conflicting data as to how long the virus was on various types of materials. Should we be closing our book drop at this point? We are close to the public, but we're still accepting the materials back, we're just disinfecting what we can when we get them in. What would your recommendation be?
I've seen a question around how long does the virus last in certain, I've seen, you know, less than one day. But I've also had people tell me that they have heard that it lasts days to weeks. All the evidence that I've come across, and certainly our guidelines have been, as I mentioned to you, at some level, it's touch frequently, it's frequently cleaned. And again, I think that it's lasting on unclean surfaces in the span of hours, certainly not days. So certainly enhance sanitization is going to be key. And I think that's going to be one key feature, not only for the libraries system, but for others that provide services to individuals where there are high touch surfaces. How can you really enhance the cleaning of those surfaces?
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you very much, Doctor Lass. Thank you. You're busy, man, I appreciate it. So where are we at now as a community? This is something that I want to address. Make sure that our community knows that we will thrive through this, but we have to work together. On a regional level, this is exactly what's happening, but we're all working together, we're all making movements together. Based on that, under my authority, I placed a state of emergency for the city of Thirteenth Lake on Monday, around four thirty, I think it was. The intent behind that was obviously to allow and identify us for funding that may be needed as this continues. We're doing everything that we can as a city to keep the information out there and available for our citizens and for our staff. And I ask that everyone continues to be patient with us. This is very evolving, as you've heard, it changes by the day, sometimes down by the hour. From that state of emergency, we determined that we were going to close the library to the public, as well as City Hall to the public. To minimize the possibilities of this being spread within our community. We are also working on supporting staff members that need time off, either due to daycare, and providing them sick leave, which is something we'll discuss a little bit further, and how we're going about that. But we're all taking this very seriously, we're following the direction of Department of Health. Every move that we have made has been under the guidance of the Department of Health. Every decision that I've made, I take seriously and I don't take lightly. But we are working as a region, every city has made a commitment to each other that we will follow the Department of Health's lead, and we're going to continue to do so. Our city's safety, our staff's safety is of primary importance, I think, for all of us. So I appreciate everybody and your patience as we address this. So with that being said, I'm going to move on to city board and commission reports.
I have a report from the library board. All right, it's very short report, being counsel and mayor. The library board just wanted to let you know that they have reviewed the one to two year, because it's kind of ambitious work plan that we've developed based on the updated strategic plan that was developed. And then the Friends of the Library have had a really lucrative year last year. And they only keep the funds in their account for a certain amount of years as a nonprofit organization. So they have approximately sixteen thousand dollars to donate to us. And I discussed with the library board what options we might have to utilize this, and we have decided to look into doing some updates in our children's room, perhaps with shelving, perhaps with furniture and whatnot. So at some point in the near-ish future, we will be bringing a, a JBL, asking for acceptance of a large donation from the Friends of the Library for that project. And they're also seeking to look at a couple revisions to our policies, and that is what the library board is working on at least.
Thank you.
I have a question. Yes, with that donation, with the possibility of utilizing that in the children's section, whatever it is, is that, does that coincide along with the assessment we're looking at?
Yes, we looked at the assessment report, we came up with a few different ideas. This would be specifically to address some of the ADA concerns where parents or children with mobility issues can't access all of the materials in that room, just based on the way it's laid out. So we'd be looking at perhaps getting some taller shelving, so we could change the layout in the space in addition to just some furniture in there, it's pretty dated. That was also our recommendation, that, you know, updates to the information would be well received.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Also very brief, Charlie Matthews, just waiting for his sentence tonight, but he decided that the best is the law. And so the planning commission continues to work on revisions to the landscape ordinance, and that's very productive. We had a very productive workshop on landscape board, it's been something along, we hope to certainly by spring or early summer have that going to hearing. We also talked about potential docked items for next year, for, for the annual cycle. And most of it was cleanup, we did discuss the sign ordinance, but the sign ordinance is a pretty heavy lift. We decided that we were going to focus on doing some research, doing some surveys with the business community, et cetera, and to set the table for possibly looking at that in the next annual cycle. And lastly, we talked, we had a workshop on ordinance to allow for recreational vehicle sales in service in the C1 zone of limited use, and some discussions on that. And it's, it's interesting because we have a number of legal non-conforming uses in that zone already that provide those types of services. And so we're looking at that, we hope to, next, then commission, we have a hearing on that. And we hope to be bringing that forward to city council in the next month or two. Any questions?
Okay, we'll move on to mayor and city council reports, inquiries. We had an inquiry, inquiries.
Just sneak that in there.
Yeah, just add it up for you guys. So, the council reports.
I think this is a great opportunity to bring up, a question we can do more as a city. Do we bring it up right now?
Sure.
Okay. I'm curious, what we can do as a city, my concern is the economic impact on small businesses. We've got restaurants that have closed down, coffee shops that might have closed down. One hand, I've, I've got a big heart for the business owners, but I've got a big one for the employees that might need those paychecks just to go buy groceries. And need those paychecks to go make their rent on this month. My understanding is utility companies are trying to do their part, not shutting down people's utilities, but I wonder, as a city, I'll be honest, I'm a little bit disappointed that from the federal level, it's been talked about for a week. I haven't, unless it showed up today, I haven't seen anything where people can get a direct check from the federal government yet. I wonder, maybe as a city, you could dedicate a fund, that some sort of emergency relief fund, where somebody could come, apply, and we help them out with some sort of funding, yeah, for emergency, and that's complicated, be abused very easily. But those are things for our citizens, if we can get a forefront of helping people. And I don't know that it would take an enormous amount, I mean, we've got roughly ten thousand residents. If it's some sort of dollar contribution that somebody could come and apply for, make sure that their family can, that they can rest assured that they are forced to stay home because the government shut down their local business, or they're trying to make the healthy decision for their family, they can do so. I just want to open that up for conversation, and see what everybody else thinks.
Well, we have a number of things from our employees' perspective that we're addressing, and how to support that. I made a promise to our staff that we would do everything necessary to make sure that they're whole during this process. There was recently, you may have saw, you know, they came across that there was a five thousand dollar donation made. But what was that, it was the?
Um, is the local service called it, or entered in on this stuff? They, they wanted to make a donation if there was a need out there.
Yeah, so they are, they posted it online, and they're going to manage that for themselves. There are a number of financial resources available on a national level, on a state level. And part of the state of emergency, through Governor Enslie, has allowed a waiver of or the ability for myself and other mayors from other cities to do emergencies spending, up to including not having to go through the normal procurement process that we typically would do. But to, if and when those times we needed to utilize funding to help with this process. It was emphasized that we document everything that's going on. So when it is time to go through funding assistance, that we're able to get. So we've been very diligent on our side, making sure we're getting all the appropriate documentation. I just put out a notice on Facebook for our citizens to continue to support our local businesses through the delivery services that are available. At this time, we have not had full discussions about utilizing city dollars to support those cases as they arise. But I'm sure we'll be looking at what options are available as we continue. It's a very evolving situation.
So, I mean, I don't think there's a clear route. If I'm a local single mom who needs to stay with one of my kids, or both of my kids, because my kids, I don't go to school. I don't have daycare backup right now, I'm not supposed to be around other people. There's not a clear route where I'm able to figure out, how to afford my grocery, or is there?
There is, so it's not only answers, and it's not all good news, but I do want to share with you from the emergency service, or excuse me, employment services. I'm just holding it up so you can see. If you are entitled to unemployment insurance, um, this is the category. Work, let's see if we can find the right category here, employer must shut down due to quarantine by a public official, that's not the category I'm looking for. Worker is caring for a sick family member, schools are closed by a public official because of COVID-19, and worker has no childcare. People over there, and there is an emergency rule that relates to unemployment, there are several categories. And I will say, a lot of documentation does say may, doesn't say shall. But there's unemployment insurance, there's paid family, and then there's a death code insurance. So these factors are out there, and I've heard, and we're figuring our own way in. We've heard that the state is going to be waiving some of the thresholds, like, you have to be eligible a week before you can collect unemployment. But again, I'm not an expert, I can tell you there's a lot of information out there, and I'm not trying to say that it's, we have all the answers, we don't. But there is this matrix that we're sharing with people that have gotten unemployment services that identifies paid family, insurance, unemployment insurance, and death code. If you are impacted financially, not able to work, laid off, your business closes. So I will make sure that before the end of the night, I can give you all of this. I don't, you do see a lot of Xs in here, which means it doesn't pay, it doesn't contribute to your role being under that category. Would that help you?
Oh, it would a lot, yeah.
Okay, we'll get you guys a copy.
Thank you.
Is that something that you can also share?
You know, we also have a bunch of links, actually Jeb does. Jeb did a lot of research for her own employees, and it's from, go ahead.
Department of Finance, Department of Security Department, and Department of Health, the governor's office, and the president's office. And so I put together a bunch of links, they're all based on government facts, it's not a serious day, it's solid material. And we sent it out to staff, and we actually posted it on Facebook today. So there's a lot of, Department of Finance is very helpful for what if I can't pay my mortgage, what if I can't pay my utility bills. They go through the whole slew of whatevs. Same with employment security departments, so they have this graphic, but they also have a page supporting that, that goes into detail of what if, what if situations and scenarios. People can really get a lot of information on those links, and they're on the city's Facebook page right now. But I'm happy to email them or Facebook email them to you.
I mean, the city can just get the education out there, the unclear means when you start going on news and Google searching. And here it's supposed to come down, I mean, you know, just how do I go do it, how quickly am I going to get that?
Well, and for my employees' sake, you know, they're seeing a lot of things on the news, they're seeing a lot of things on social media. So I, I, I don't like that, I want them to have facts. So I try to glean that out and go straight to the sources by passing. So I tried to glean that out and go straight to the sources by passing news channels and social media. And so by doing that, I found about six very solid links to government resources that are actually very well done. I was very impressed. They're easy to read.
We get our website, thanks for putting it on Facebook. Just the more information we can obtain better.
Yes.
Thank you, that's awesome.
The second, that we get any information that we find to be reliable information, we should put it on our Facebook and watch that immediately. That was, and I really do want to commend our entire staff. They have been amazing through all of this. They've been very diligent about trying to get the information out there to our community. And they've done phenomenal job. I can't comment enough across the board for all their efforts. Or thank you guys.
Jen, if I could just make an observation. I really would love to see that stuff first on our website and the subsequent on Facebook. I'll just try to answer your notion that our website, in my opinion, is our primary communication institutions. And Facebook is a resource that really is a part of our community. So our website, well, I think always should be the first place to make sure we make this stuff.
We do have that information on there.
It's on our website as well. We've been working very hard to make sure it's on everything that we can.
Okay. Go ahead. Because everything's going on out. We haven't had any meetings built, too. I've not been to meetings in the last few days, so which I really appreciate that. No withdrawals, we didn't have. But I did think of something that's coming over the last few days. Today's St. Patrick's Day. What you think about St. Patrick's Day is I look around, Roman, it was great. You know, I'm not something you did that time, though. My grandmother, who was born and raised in Ireland, always said, with a thick robe, because your name's Kennedy, you always get a pass. The same occasion, all those days, no matter what your nationality is, everybody gets to have a good time, do good on St. Patrick's Day. But here we are talking about doom and gloom that the doctor less presented. But at the same time, I want to share that things are really good in this country. My grandparents got a date about them, they, both grand and grandmothers, were pretty much raised by them. They lived through the potato famine during that first time, they experienced that. In the United States in early 1990s, they knew what the influence was during that period of time. And I can remember as a kid growing up, hearing my grandmother with a thick robe, that anytime somebody said something bad about this country, she would almost want to take a stick and beat that. And she was pointing out how she was raised during that period of time. And also the United States, where she, they lived through World War I, they lived through World War II. And the thing they always stressed was this, and this just floods back to me today the last few days, that this country is so great. No matter what is given to us, we come together and make sure that we get through it. And I see that that's what we're doing now. I think it's really outstanding. We will get through this. With that in mind, I want to lead into, is that there's a lot of uncertainty with people that are, are we going to be able to work or not? And how long will this last? For the people who are listening to this tonight, and go online a little later on, I want to assure you from my standpoint, that the city, we're really in pretty good shape. We are so fortunate in many ways compared to a lot of cities in the state that have tremendous debt. And we are not in that position. Right now, I believe our total debt is about $16,000, which I think we could get paid off in June or something.
I'd say, well, not 16,000, 16,000, not 16,000.
Thank you. $2,000. Except for that, for the people who are listening to this, is that we're at least in a position where leadership in the past, elected officials and our staff, has been very conscientious of how we're spending our dollars. And it brings us to where we are today, and we're in a very good position. For many of us, we've always said in our very life, always wanted to be in a good position. And that's G-O-O-D, which stands for get out of debt. This city, through the leadership and staff, has been able to maintain that for a long period of time. So going into this crisis, we're really in a pretty good situation. So I just want to assure everybody who's listening to this, that we, this is a concern. We do have to be conscientious of what we're doing. But financially, thank God, that we've done some, made some of the decisions we have in the past that leads us to where we are today. Thanks.
Moving on to the side, council reports. So from the mayor's report, I think I've been in my meetings, not in the last week, but I've been in my entire life in regards to all of this. And we hope to continue to go to a lot of these, to make sure that we're giving all the information that we need. The, we implemented similar to Arsenal Angels and our leaf crew. What did we say, decide the name was?
Livery Lake Connected?
Connecting Livery Lake.
Connecting Livery Lake. And we've already had a great number of people that have volunteered their abilities and services to help those less fortunate. Whether it be to get them supplies, to take care of things that they may need during this entire process. So I really cannot thank the people in our community enough for stepping up at the level they have to help each other out. It is, as you may have seen, time for a census. And that is something that is going on. As of right now, you can go on to the census website, so we can connect your accounts, which only helps us at the end of the day for pursuing dollars and to that effect for our city. So I encourage you to let everybody know, to get on there and get their census form filled out. As a city, we have worked very hard to do a number of things to mitigate the risks that are out there. We are having all of our staff kind of trying to stay inside as much as possible and to not engage the public. And if it is, it's on a very limited basis. I think that our citizens have been very phenomenal. We're asking people that do need permits to go online to fill those out and utilize that resources available to them. And like I said, we're, RJ and Katie and I have had some discussions about financials. The thing that we're going to be monitoring closely is, and that's a bit of a challenge, is we're going to see a pretty good spike, because a lot of people have been buying supplies at their local grocery stores. But we won't really see what the impact is for, let's say, April until June. It's about a two-month lag. So we're being very diligent about watching those financials. As we continue to monitor it, we'll make decisions appropriately. So, again, I can't thank the staff enough for all their efforts during this time. Moving on to your city municipal report.
Okay, you can hear me all right? I'll sit right here. Now I'll go to the podium. I should ask Adita, should I go to the podium?
If you could, go to the podium, I'd appreciate it.
It's okay, I'll just come over here.
Thank you, Katie.
So we do have a lot of things to cover. We've been very fluid at City Hall, and I know when Mayor Brinkley mentioned all of the meetings we've gone to, I can tell you between webinars and meetings, I think you could fill every day of the week. So we're trying to manage the best we could. So I just put a lot of things out there suggested, because some of them are things I just want you to be aware of. One is our contract with Staples with Trailhead. This is just kind of the status check here. Two weeks ago, we had the workshop. Right now, there's only about $75 left in their contract. So they're kind of on hold until we decide what we want them to do. So we haven't given them direction as to what the next step is. So I'm not, I'm only saying that so you're aware, they're not actively working on anything until we tell them which options the city would like to pursue. Henry in Harvard Row, always got really good news. I sent you the update from our lobbyist, as well as I think something from the state. The funding is in place. We're keeping our fingers crossed that Governor Rinsley will sign it. Design is progressing on Henry, and Harvard is coming together for the writing and the unwrap on our schedule. So things are so far so good, I'll leave it at that. And then I'm going to move on to the council retreat. So I want to do this in a couple of steps and then ask for your feedback. Maybe not tonight, but soon. One is, Letitia Hill is an executive of Vista, and she has volunteered to be our facilitator. Do you know Letitia? She's a very highly talented individual. Mayor Brinkley, did you want to say anything, something she has facilitated for you?
Yeah, we, Campus Member Kennedy and I were at a meeting, put on kind of an IGSI, if you will, to work on more collaborative efforts on a regional level, not just amongst cities, but large organizations, large businesses. Particularly in the past, I've used this analogy quite a few times. There are situations that arise where you may have two entities working toward the exact same goal. But without that communication, they're pulling on both sides of the road. They're not getting it worked. So this was a meeting to discuss and recognize the importance of collaborations amongst all those entities. She facilitated the meeting. She was phenomenal on keeping us on our task, and she was phenomenal to make sure we were all paying attention.
That's right.
If she felt like you weren't paying attention or engaged in the conversation, she would say, what are your thoughts? And I happened to be looking at a message when she was doing her presentation, and I was looking at that for a hot second, and she said, what do you think, Livery Lake? I appreciated that greatly, because it is important that we stay on task during this retreat so we can accomplish all the things we need to. So I'm excited to see what she can do with it.
So I have a conference call with Eric Thursday, get kicked the ball, or get started. But then I know she's going to reject all of you individually before the retreat to figure out, you know, what's important to you, what areas you are focused on, and all of those, kind of get your feedback. The time was decided, I think at the last council meeting, to be started noon, it will go to six, or thereabouts. You guys can obviously adjourn whenever you want. It will be at the internet portal, and then the agenda. So we have 21 items on the agenda, and you want to put it up. And I'm not going to go through them. Should I go through them all? I can go through them very quickly.
Yeah.
Discussion of term limits for elected officials, public engagement regarding civic issues, review and update strategic plan, Trailhead, sponsorships and partnerships of community priorities, city council tracking schedule, city logo, city motto, new resident welcome packet, pedestrian master plan, process for approval of design review for city projects, undeveloped city land, revisit priorities which include transportation, Harvard, Henry, library assessment, and Trailhead, elected officials' responsibilities to citizens, risk management, supplying contract information to council, or, excuse me, supplying contract information to council, phone numbers and emails on all parts and arts commissioners and planning commission, review appointments before voting on mayor's elections, question mark, review who is on the hotel motel tax board, authorize getting an assistant for RJ, cross-trading someone, motion, second, and vote on more issues, and install photos of elected officials in City Hall Library and supply business cards at the front desk. So we've heard, I think, from three folks, what I thought in conversation with the mayor before the meeting, if you want to add something, that's fine. If you could get it to us by the end of the week, and then we will send it out to all of you. And what we're asking is you prioritize which ones, and then the, obviously, the highest vote getters will be higher on the agenda. I don't want to cut off anything, and I know some of those items might be a five-minute discussion instead of, you know, an hour discussion. I don't know. But I think maybe if you want to either strike, kind of what I'm thinking, let me share the idea with you. Let's say hypothetically, we could get to 10 subjects. If you could prioritize your top 10, and then the remainder, we could either have another retreat or we could bring it back in a workshop format. That's kind of what we're thinking. Is that, is 10 about the right number, do you think?
I think so, for the 12, 13 discussions.
So if that's the case, if you have more you want to add, if you get it to end by Friday, then we will send it out Friday at 5 o'clock. And if you could get it back to us in a week or so with your top 10. And then the highest vote getters would be earlier in the agenda.
I think also we look at the list, and I think a lot of these things can be combined into the same discussion.
Okay.
Combined, narrow, and Dallas, I think we want to take that consideration. We will put it in our priorities.
Okay, so first step is if you want to edit or combine, let us know by Friday. And then after that, then we brought your top 10. Okay.
And as we proceed with this, and you guys, this was important to you, I just ask that you all be fully engaged in this process. This is your retreat. This is your opportunity to have some phenomenal discussion. We all stand to do a job, and this is part of it. So I look forward to everybody's full engagement on moving forward with this.
One thing I'm very encouraged by with this retreat is that we already gave ourselves six hours. And for me personally, I really want to see us focus on issues that the council wants to have, and limit, extreme limit on bringing anybody into your reports. Okay? Because I do recall in the last retreat, five years ago, that that was one of the things the council had said that they did not want to have that. And an individual took it long south to allow somebody, and it took about 40 some minutes of overall presentation, and it didn't go well. So I think it's very important that whatever would have come up, we stay focused to that.
It's just that we've done all locations around the portal building. Is there two big entrances on the front of the building? Go to the one marked main, not central. It's kind of contradictory, I guess, while with the revolving door. My badge will get us into the building, so over there, starting at 1:30, we'll write this up, some tables and whatnot. But there will be plenty of room there for us to split up.
So we're thinking, we have a sign on the door that if you wanted, if you're the public, you want to come in, you could call a number, and then we can come down and let you in. I'm assuming you don't believe the door a lot?
No.
Okay.
One of my questions with Letitia, who I doubt, she did an outstanding job. She volunteered to do this around...
I'm going to ask her on Thursday. That's how you're standing.
I would like to take, for the council to consideration, what we did five years ago, that the individual at the time refused to take any pay. But what the city did offer was a donation to somebody that their chair, and that's what was done. And I think that we, if she wants to do it, as long as time is great, I think it would be nice of us to offer a dollar amount, maybe similar to what we've done in the past, for her favorite chair.
Okay, I'm also going to, the next item on my report is donation, report out. We don't have a donation to report out this week, this meeting, next meeting on April 7th, we will have a list of some of the smaller donations that have been given, as well as the $16,000 donation from the friends. I do want to mention, kind of on a sidebar, Vista dropped these out. They have to do with smart meters. Smart meters are, I asked Melanie as I was driving, what should I tell the council about these smart meters? One is, we are Zone 6. They will be installed May through July. What's really cool about these is that if you lose power, they can tell remotely that you lost power. You don't have to call a Vista and say, I lost power. That's one thing. The other thing that's really cool is if you really want to save money, and you say, hey, let me know when I get to $150 on my electrical bill, they can send, its programs will can send you a message. So no more meter readers reading their electrical meters. They can actually send you a bill and say, hey, turn off your feet, you hit $150. I don't know if that's the case around there. It's kind of cool. The other thing is waste management is not changing any of their collection of garbage. This is from Tammy Anker. But they are installing a lot of computers. They've invested over $11 million in computers that they are installing for, so for the next few days, residential services questions and those kinds of things might need to lay there if they're onboarding all of these new computers and customer service services. Okay, I'm going to go down to number five. Tracking follow-up with city council, so this is a couple of items that came out before. APO and city council meetings. What you have on your agenda is a, asking you to approve approximately over $35,000, $36,000. We identified in the agenda, though, all the pieces that go into that. None of it has to do with remodeling anything at City Hall. Everything that we're buying is transferable. And we identified all the bits and pieces that go into that for approximately $36,000. So I just want to let you know that it's on the agenda today. I'm just going to keep moving. Winter Glow, Jen's going to give you a quick synopsis of where they are, what's on the agenda.
Good evening. So on your agenda for approval tonight is the $10,000 Winter Globe invoice. The groups have shared with me that until... Um, the groups have shared with me that until, uh, council has approved that invoice, meaning we have the go-ahead to do this, um, they can't really do their planning appropriately and their planning starts now. So that's why it's on the agenda as early as it is. Um, it likely is not going to be paid anytime soon. Last year, we did it in two separate payments. We did a five thousand payment at the very beginning of the project and then the follow-up five thousand dollar balance at the end of the project. Uh, as far as I'm aware, that's going to be the same, um, this year. So we won't have a payment actually going out for quite some time, but, uh, that is on the agenda. And I think the details were well-defined by Tom Selberg this evening and Mark Taba. So if you have any questions, I do have two representatives here from Winter Glow. Uh, if you have questions, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Me?
You do.
How are you?
I don't feel like you answered that.
I need to go. Um, sorry about the triple here. Oh, I'm, uh, I'm. Hey, thanks a lot for everything the city of Lover Lake does for Winter Glow. Um, just, it's a great gift back to your community, our community, the county, everybody else. Um, we are in the, the pining stage, uh, taking the last couple of months off, off my foot for the next nine weeks. So I got lots of time to get it organized. Um, we will start assembling in September. I was going to break everything out, see what's up in front and get some, get the new displays that we want to put service in. Uh, so that's kind of where we're at. Um, we're kind of waiting on your guys' approval so we can check the title sponsor off and as we contact our sponsors, we can say, you know, that one's already been taken, but there are other, um, sponsorships available. So that's where we are right now.
Thank you. Appreciate it. We're looking forward to it.
Yeah, and I just hope it's better times, you know. It was great last year. It pulled out real fast and, you know, I just can't say enough about how it turned out and, uh, and I didn't hear any complaints, so.
We appreciate it for your, your efforts and we look forward to it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to leave you, so. You're anybody? Have you got any questions, Jen?
So just a quick update about library operations at the moment, so you all know what's going on over there. Uh, so per Department of Health guidelines with social distancing, um, the library closed to the public at six P M. last Friday. We are still doing, um, hold pickup. People who had holds on the shelf already, they come, they ring the doorbell and we check out their materials and, and give them to them. So they're still able to get those. Um, we have been posting things online about, um, online resources people can access and some instructions and things like that. We are still at the library. We're still answering the phones to assist with getting onto the online resources. Um, and now we are working on projects that always fall behind the list. So, um, let's see, is there anything else? Those are the main things about what's going on. Um, all the library programs and meetings have been canceled through the end of the month, but us reevaluating probably mid-week, next week to determine how far into the future we continue canceling and things like that. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Question, Johnson. Can I reach out and make a whole turn item like tonight and come back tomorrow?
Right now, we have that turned off. We are evaluating whether or not we can allow some other form of hold pickup, but the other libraries in our C I N group, uh, many of them are closed without staff working at the library. So today is the last day we actually receive shipment from other libraries. So if we reduce something, um, it would be an old-school way where they call us and we will see what we can find on the shelf for you. So we're evaluating whether or not that's a service that we can offer.
A follow-up to the other question. So is post falls open or closed to this?
They are closed at this point. Yes.
We're getting new A B A.
Boy, yeah, now.
Um, so I handed out, there's three items that I'm going to go over. One is going to be the dashboard and I hand out some notes that I don't literally get to play doh, but we're in, um, on new territory. Uh, so I wanted to have my thought process that you can follow, um, on what this dashboard purposes. So we introduced this dashboard about six, five, six years ago, just as a way to, uh, push that first section, top section, to, um, monitor how we feel, um, the city is doing, assessing how the city is doing. And most of the time, it's, uh, within those five, six years, the arrow has never gone to the left. It's always stayed right there. Um, and that's where we're at today. This information based on February, everything that we understand, uh, of the indicators that everything is, uh, revenues are being articulated. And those are the key indicators of what the revenues are doing. Um, our, we have really basically four major revenue sources that we got locked between eighty, eighty-five percent of our city operating revenue, that's property tax, sales tax, utility tax and building permits. Um, but one thing, good thing in this, if you're looking at how we manage property tax and utility tax, they're both in the lasted. They're not going to have very much variance. We're going to collect the property tax unless something basically happens or Olympia, government changes some rules, property tax was supposed to be collected, it's collected in last year's session. If you look at a revenue, we just saw the property tax just kind of slow the government bill. So that's not going to take a, that. Utility tax, kind of the same thing, might be saving some small, um, props, but, uh, people can't pay the utility bills on time, but that tax is attached to the utility bill. Um, sales tax and building permits are two of the last ones. Those will have the very best variances. Um, and as Mayor mentioned, the sales tax is a two on the last. So the information looking today on sales tax is actually December's revenue data. Um, we won't probably know when sales tax really starts to get, it's always cut by data-wise until about that June or July. Um, they will, but we'll have some indicators out there. That's something that's going to work. We'll know that the building revenue says drop down. You can see construction not happening. You can see doors closing out areas. We'll have to be careful. We want to see bands coming down the pipe. Um, but we don't know that today. Um, so as we, uh, get more data, as we have more experience, um, don't go back to that. Did I do that? Did you?
I did.
Okay. When we, this era, era will start, if, if things still kind of trail off and as the blue guy was there earlier talking about, this area will start going down. We'll see if there's normal conditions, administrative action and council action. I'll touch on those, um, as we, uh, analyze this dashboard. Um, so the key indicators that are in February is that sales tax currently is up eight percent higher than it was this time last year. So it's a really good strong start. Um, it's the high school's fault for that. An almost, almost exact dollar amount. I mean, when we looked at where we're at last time, what, what, we're getting sales tax from high school. Um, but that's also means we're moving last year's expectations. Sales tax is very strong. Uh, power sales instruction is strong. We still see a lot of building, a lot of demand for housing. Um, the, uh, two things I've highlighted here is this reserve fund balance and then where we're at cash-wise, um, the reserve fund balance is, it's, it's a fund money, money that can only be spent by council action. Um, so I only, there's one point two, almost one point three million dollars sitting there uh, for, for action. The, the idea, the purpose of it is in emergency situations, this money is there available to you. There's two things that we have to want to plan. You'll have to indicate that we want to use this money for this emergency, whatever that might be. The second thing that happens is we plan how to replenish it at a later date. So as we do have a minimum threshold, that we have to have like fifteen percent reserve fund balance based on projected operating revenues. And that number is about one point two million dollars. So it's funded where it needs to be. The general fund also has a cash balance of three million dollars. For the policy, I'm going to have a balance of one point eight. So there's about a one point two difference in there. I will tell you that, uh, the lift for North Park, at least the first phase, they approved that last week. One's in the left goal. There are voucher people who've gotten checks. We should see that first, that check coming from North Park this week. So that really, that three million dollar number should be closer to three point nine. Um, and then we will turn around and hopefully have a reimbursement request in order. It's a million for North Park. Looking so, I think it goes a little bit higher on that. Um, kind of looking forward, or we're going to watch it. The mayor alluded to this, uh, we're going to watch the sales tax. Uh, we know, um, we know what the governor has to handle, closing out restaurants, bars. Um, I did some research today. I know that last year, sales tax generated from those type of industries about two hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars over the entire year. That's about twenty-one thousand dollars of sales tax that will come in the city alone. So we're trying to know, so could you repeat that again? Was it two hundred and what? Um, so last year, two thousand and eighteen, the food establishment includes the two hotels, um, we collected two hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars of sales tax for, for the whole year. For the whole year. That's about an average of twenty-one thousand dollars a month. Gotcha. So as we start looking at a drop-off in that, we can expect it to at least be about twenty-one thousand dollars a month less in sales tax going forward, based on the fact those places are closed. Um, but as you mentioned, there's going to be probably a weird spike at the very initial because we also, you know, when you go to the grocery store, you cannot buy some certain staple items that are taxable. So you're going to see this weird spike, um, probably come June. And I might carry over for a month. We'll see. Uh, so at least you're looking from a revenue standpoint, city is going to be, uh, still collecting, um, well up until midsummer. Um, but we'll, we'll, we'll start talking about what actions we need to take based on what we're seeing out there from the feds, from the state level, um, uh, and hopefully have some more direction when it comes to what can we do as a city and how we're addressing it. But that will more come from the governor's office. Loosen some of those there. Um, actions to take. So one of the things that we did as a council, Mayor, two years ago, is this longer legalized spreadsheet. We did this kind of disaster scenario summary. Um, so it's, it's two years dated, but it still kind of gives you an idea of what happens if sales taxes are dropped by, we did thirty-three percent in this scenario, by basically a million dollars. What kind of actions would we need to take? Um, and if you flip over to the backside, we kind of outlined some ideas. We wouldn't do travel or train. We wouldn't, uh, we would put a suspension on certain, um, uh, services. So one twenty-five thousand's council professional, professional services, that was a, that's legal advice for council. We, we, which without it there, we get overtime and some other items. The biggest ones were, um, reducing seasonal staff, um, in hiring positions that hadn't been, haven't updated under recruiting for that. Uh, so those are some ideas that we've come back with in terms of administrative actions. Kind of the middle section of that, of that dashboard. Uh, then, um, other actions that council can take if we got down that far or if there was a need to, at emergency purposes, purposes that we're looking at, do we use some of that reserve fund money that's sitting there? Do we use some of that general fund cash balance for stop, yeah, measure quickly? Knowing in a certain, a couple of months, is this recession just deep and quick or it's a recession, sorry. Let me rephrase that. If there's a recession, we see a downturn, how long did it last? So how quickly will we move it by? And you want to go there?
RJ?
Yes?
In the recent months, we had a slight discussion at one of the council meetings that we could actually take the reserve fund and increase that.
Correct.
Okay. I wonder if it's not consideration of the council, which we've explored at some point, maybe even as your retreat, that gives a better idea of where we are financially and what might happen if we should look at increasing that. We're ready to a fund or whatever you want to call it.
So we're just. About increasing and you're basically taking this number here that's sitting here and you're moving it there.
Right.
So.
Thank you.
Um, there's now activity on the backside with the project levels. Uh, you see some activity on the public courtyard. Uh, we spent about, um, through February, we spent about almost eighty thousand dollars. Um, hard bridge growth, road, bridge design. Uh, we still have some, uh, uh, design work going there. So that's a continuation of a multi-year design project. So. Any questions?
One other question. You mentioned we're eight percent above what we were last year. That has to do with the high school stuff. Off the top of your head, without that, have we had an increase of auto sales and RV sales?
We're pretty close with what we were last year.
Okay, so fairly steady?
Yes.
Very good, thank you.
And, you know, I mean, not too belittled, but something around now. The RV have their big show earlier, um, in February. So people buying RVs have already bought.
Okay, so number nine is dates to remember and I, obviously we also recorded our study tonight and I, I was really impressed with the quality of the work and the explanation. He took something that was somewhat, could have been complicated and made very, very understandable. Then what I decided to do was I just put pending further notice. You know, there's so many dates out there. It's how long is this going to be in effect? How long is this going to be in effect? And so library closed pending further notice. East Drive kind of at this point, we're just saying it's pending further notice. We, we've been in contact, uh, actually Jen's been in contact with them, so we don't know for sure. Uh, also the vote for waste event, these were, these are scheduled, I believe, for April nineteenth, eighteen and nineteen somewhere there. So those are, they're kind of on hold until we know more than we know right now. And the council retreat right now is scheduled for April nineteenth. We'll keep our fingers crossed. And then Martin Market, May sixteenth, the community test. And then our next council meeting is April seventh and we're kind of set up this way. If things don't change, we'll probably have the same kind of format at that meeting. So Mayor, that concludes my report.
Uh, sort of the things I did want to, uh, address, I forgot to mention. Um, Katie and I had a little call with the staff members, uh, to talk about what's going on to keep them all up to speed. And we've managed to come to them that we'll meet with all of them once we meet as we continue to gather information. Uh, so we're, we're keeping everybody on the staff side of it. Um, this is not a time where people should be panicking. Uh, this is a time where we should all be working together. Um, but with that being said, I'm going to notice how people may panic a little bit. And one of the things that, uh, the sheriff mentioned in his press conference was for people to not get any bad ideas, um, to take advantage of people in our community as they will be charged at full force, uh, in front of the law enforcement side to make sure that, you know, everyone's doing the right thing. So I want to make sure everyone's aware that our law enforcement will be, uh, out in full force making sure that our community is safe, which we are very grateful for. Okay, moving on to action items.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. You can set agenda. Motion, put a city council meeting in as of the March third, two thousand and twenty special meeting. I approve the city council minister's order, March third, two thousand and twenty meeting.
Seven.
On paper?
Aye.
opposed?
I motion to approve, March seventeenth, two thousand and twenty dollars in the amount of five hundred and sixty-two thousand, seven hundred and five dollars, twenty cents.
Seven.
Any questions on the vouchers? On it?
Yes, sir. Thanks, RJ, for giving my call today. I had a couple of questions I don't put in there. It looked like we were bringing a, uh, uh, compacters three times to the ballpark. So that's awesome.
Any other questions on the vouchers? Hit on a paper?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
General business one, a motion authorized payment and invoice for mature bills spectacular in the amount of ten thousand dollars.
On a paper?
Aye.
Any discussion?
Discussion?
My privacy, I'd like to say is that this is such a great event, if nothing else, if nothing else that I've seen since I've visited the city, that where we put out to have volunteers, this is the most incredible thing that I've seen that we've had volunteers. So that in itself, as far as I'm concerned, justifies that why Winter Glow, I'm a sub, will be pinned in from this, from this point on, is very, very successful. Thank you.
Okay, so we have the ayes. Any nays? Okay. That has passed.
General business two, motion authorized Mayor to sign the identity of Palankey's restaurant and extension of the current lease agreement.
Discussion? Any questions?
He's answered it, Timber.
No question on this side? Okay, on paper?
Aye.
opposed? Eyes have it?
General business three, motion authorized Mayor to sign the Granicus contract to purchase all components of the, the project.
Discussion? Yes.
Yes, sir. Sorry. Had the luxury of sitting in on this discussion when it was previously had by the council. One question that I have is, I just wanted to ensure that everybody's aware that the budget for 2020 covers the one-time fees and the annual fees. But was everybody's expecting that we're going to renew the annual fees for 2020, but correct?
Any further questions, comments? On paper?
Aye.
opposed? Eyes have it? Resolution?
Resolution number twenty dash two sixty-seven, City of Liberty Lakes, Spokane County, Washington. A resolution of the City of Liberty Lakes, Spokane County, Washington, declaring support for the Bigelow Sullivan Quarter Freedom Mobility and Safety Project.
Make a motion that number twenty dash two six seven.
Second.
Discussion? Any questions? All in the room?
Actually, greater ability, especially on Bigelow. I often travel to the north side. And so you can consider traveling. I'm not even a two-hour. So it's really important for me to argue.
On paper?
Aye.
Aye.
opposed? Okay, eyes have it? Next resolution?
Resolution number twenty dash two sixty-eight, City of Liberty Lakes, Spokane County, Washington. A resolution of the City of Liberty Lake, Washington, declaring an emergency relating to the existing COVID-19 conditions.
Make a motion, resolution twenty dash two sixty-eight.
Second.
Comments? Questions?
Yeah, I have some comments. Yes, sir. So my first question is, I took the time to read RCW thirty-eight fifty-two oh two oh. And just want to make sure that what we're authorizing here is basically the mayor, the mayor to react to the disaster as described in this RCW. You might try to read the part that's caught my attention the most. Including the not limited to budget, all limitations, requirements of competitive bidding, excuse your bidding, allocation of notices, provisions pertaining to performance of public work, entering into contracts, incurring obligations, the employment of impaired workers, the rental of equipment, the purchase of supplies and materials, the levying of taxes, and the appropriation and expenditures of public funds. So my question is, if you had to use this RCW, would the funds come from the emergency funds? Or general reserve or general, general fund? RJ, any thoughts on that?
So great question. The use of, so going through the process, you're giving them before you act to emergency. You're going to see the information come back to you, what will also be the purchase. It's just, it's the timing of it all. It would be general fund. It would be incredibly fun to have. It depends on the project, though. So I would, I would say general fund would be the general rule, but there are exceptions depending on if it's associated with a streak or if it's associated with something that we can usually reach and fund with capital lines. But if we're out, if it's manpower, you get out there because we've got to do some kind of large delivery or something like that, that would be a general fund. I don't know, come out of general fund. General fund cash balance. We can take a step further. There is possibly, because you do have a reserve fund that you could authorize some dollars. They can, the mayor can, you know, to go and kind of blanket PO per se, I'd say, use this one first. Let's, let's, let's go and use this as a resource.
Well, as you stated earlier, there's one fund versus the other. You can shuffle money from one to the other. So what difference does it really make? I guess I was just curious.
A lot easier if I have general fund, I'm sitting in general fund then the other reserve fund that takes action for the council.
RJ, are all of the funds that the mayor spends audible?
Audible, yes.
And also, would he spend money on an item in one category, spend it on another category without budget? So the budget amendment would be required, he was to spend money in one category in the budget.
So this is really requiring to spend dollars at any given time. There would be a budget amendment that would follow after.
I understand.
The emergency, the emergency resolution gives the authority to make purchases without going through three bid process and to do this now. But the, the procurement does come back for council approval to review. If it exceeds budget appropriations, there would be a budget, there would be a budget amendment that would come forward that you acknowledge that.
Thank you. And just from my perspective, I have made the commitment to not only our community, but to the city staff as well as the city council to have a good transparency. And we'll maintain that through this entire process. My goal is to not have to do this. That's always the objective. But know that if there is a situation that arises, you guys will be made aware of it.
To my mind, it's pretty grand authority, and I just wanted to have a discussion about it.
Absolutely. And I don't take it lightly.
I know you don't.
I think it's important to realize that it's for emergency.
Right.
It's emergency.
Chris, one question.
I'm thinking back to a time several years ago when, at, you may remember that meeting, I know Katie was, when the mayor of Tuscaloosa, Alabama, came and spoke to us about when they, they had, by twenty, they had declared a state of emergency. Because my question is with regards to this, this resolution, given that the state of Washington is declaring an emergency. So as the president, does this opens up to receive funding as well or for a renewed reimbursement?
That was, that was the intent behind this. Yes.
So that, that's an important piece of the resolution as well is to receive any funds that become available from federal state.
Absolutely. Any further comments or questions? Then you heard, on paper?
Aye.
opposed? Eyes have it? Any questions about Danny's agenda?
Okay, April seventh, I would speak through loud. So I don't have to go up there. Continue discussion at House Bill fourteen oh six. And depending on how that, how long that takes, Lisa's going to be the presenter on that. We might add a department or two or written records to fill in that full hour. Lisa, do you expect that workshop to be a full hour?
I don't know right now. I'm not sure that it meant that Paul is trying to find out how I can.
So to the degree that she's ready or coronavirus has more information that we can do a workshop on or, or city reports from Chicago Park. It'll be there. We also are looking at to approve an ARBRIS on call amendment that is to assist us with managing our tree inventory. That's tentative right now, so we don't know for sure that it will be ready. We also have an action to use surplus property that's no longer needed. And then we have a resolution amending the city's financial management policy. RJ, is there any incentive to have it? Is that already?
That is close to me, and right, that has to do with looking at the vehicle allowance for the mayor. And we were close to having it for this meeting, but we weren't right there. So we can share a draft document for council to view.
So I'd like to share with council kind of what we're thinking. In the past, our mayor always submitted mileage and parking vouchers. And then we would go through and have the miles calculated and then it would come through. We looked at two years of reimbursements and we think that $140, if that is the right figure, would cover reimbursement for gasoline as well as parking vouchers. And so rather than having all of the time spent in putting these together, the mayor would just receive a, our recommendation would receive a $140 stipend for mileage reimbursement. That's in essence what it is.
Is the purpose of that to cut back on the time it takes to keep track? How do we work that without the rest of council that go to a lot of meetings?
Right. So Tricia takes care of that for, for all of us. And the other thing to be mindful, the mayor's activity seems to be a little more arduous. RJ, do you have a chance to spend on that?
So with the previous mayor, it was, it was collecting receipts, seeing that information together. It was multiple trips here and there. We had a pretty good system because we could use it from here to the destination. I understand, but the current mayor, one of the challenges we have that he might be doing business or already down in that area, but then it tends to need to drive back. So we don't have that consistency of it's quick going mileage with that required. And you keep in mind a log to track each, each, each delivery that we would call it.
Reversal.
Reversal. To and from. So we look at from the ease of accounting, ease of amount of travel back and forth, that this one was simple, simpler.
And this is a lot cheaper for the city. And for the amount of meetings I go to, you guys get a good deal out of it. I get taxed on that, so.
Are you going to use a motorcycle when you get better mileage?
We'll see. Up and on the weather.
So that's the, that's the only change we have in the financial policy definition.
Anything further?
Nope.
Okay. Uh, please, comments? Not hearing any, we will go to executive session. We're in real estate at twenty forty-four, eight forty-four. We're on, if there were ten people, and I expect it would take about ten, fifteen minutes for the table.